I call the Media and North Syracuse Board of Education to order, please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public that way, so we're standing ready. Monotation under God into this whole, with every team and justice for the whole.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to observe a moment of silence for the following. Joanne Dinoff, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Tricia Evans, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Connor Frye, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Peter Drams, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kathy Villanueva, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kevin Hendricks, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Todd Michael Moore, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Randall Hall, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Hey, we're going to begin this evening with a proclamation for school occupational therapists. Throughout our school buildings, school occupational therapists have an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. School occupational therapists of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. And have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. To honor the school occupational therapists of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments. I, Paul Farfali, president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board. Express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three as School Occupational Therapist Appreciation Day. Be celebrated with appropriate activities. And I'll make the emotion look for a second from Mr. Crabtree. Any discussion? Seeing none? That is carried. Thank you.
Good evening. What we'd like to do is we would like to recognize all the occupational therapists that are here today. I have John Curilla here to my side, and I will let him start.
They're good.
Okay.
They already know what to do.
All right, well, we'll have people introduce themselves in the location that they're in.
I'm Jennifer Slusser, and I work at the North Syracuse Early Education Program.
I'm Nicole Halligan, and I work at Cicero Elementary.
Kristy Relia, and I work at Gillette Road Middle School.
I'm Courtney Sprague, and I work at Bear Road.
I'm Carrie Forseen, and I work at Roxborough Elementary.
On behalf of the North Syracuse Central School District and the Board of Education, we'd like to thank you for all that you do for our students, and we do have a certificate for you.
Go down the line and you can shake your hand.
Okay.
Hey, our first presentation this evening will be the OCMBOSI's presentation. We have Colleen Viziano and Matt Cook here to do the presentation, correct? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Thank you.
So, good evening. We're happy to be here. I'm Matt Cook. I'm the district superintendent at OCMBOSI's. And we have often come to your meetings in past years and sort of done a thirty thousand foot view of of our services and what we provide and the partnership we have between North Syracuse and BOSI's. And so still just want to start by expressing our gratitude for that and our appreciation for how well our district and OCMBOSI's work together and collaborate for the best needs of our students. Today, we're going to do something a little bit different. And talk a little bit about some of our specific programs, particularly the embedded career and tech programs. I just wanted to start out by highlighting one of the things that you have in your handout packet. There's four North Syracuse students that we are highlighting for their participation in the Skills USA program. Skills USA is a leadership organization for students in the career and tech world, where they get a chance to really sort of hone and show off their skills in a very competitive but also supportive environment for kids to be able to really shine and show some of what they've learned and some of the leadership that goes along with that. So, wanted to start by highlighting that, and I'm going to turn it over to Colleen, who's going to walk you through the rest of the program.
Great. Thanks, Matt. So, tonight, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking with you about our embedded career and technical education programs. And these started about ten, around ten or twelve years ago, when we thought about how can we expand our career and technical education offerings outside of the walls of our campuses? And it really has gone off very, very well. We've had a lot of support from businesses, and so just want to showcase some of those programs for you tonight. And I guess, first of all, when you think about what an embedded CTE program is, it's a few different things, and it really is a win-win situation. So, it's a classroom that's actually based in a business. Students come, they're junior and senior year in high school, and attend for a half day. But instead of going to the BOSI's campus, they go to an actual business in one of our communities to learn their skills, while they also have a BOSI's classroom teacher present. And so, you need to have a partnership. You need to have a business that's ready and willing to say yes. We see this as an opportunity to help build people with the professional skills we need in our particular career field, and we're willing to invest in them and also give them some space. We also have college credit, which not everyone necessarily knows or thinks about when they think about career and technical education. We'll get into that a little bit more in the presentation. And what I think is one of the highlights of the program is that students get to work alongside professionals in the real world. And you'll get a chance to see what that looks like. So, it's really an everyday internship. There actually, you know, one of the things we say about helping students determine what they want in their future is it would be nice to allow them to have some of those enrichment opportunities, working side by side, people in the field to determine if, in fact, this is the direction they want to go. It really is as real as it gets. So, the first program that we ever started for an embedded CTE program was with Driver's Village. And I remember sitting down with Roger Burdick around a table and kind of pitching the idea with a couple of my colleagues. And he bought in right away and said, I see this as a way to build professionals in our field and a chance for us to get first dibs on really qualified folks. So, we went ahead and started that class. This is Eric Dodge, the teacher with an earlier class, and it's located right at Driver's Village. We could never afford to have the equipment that Driver's Village does. So, to have our students have the opportunity to work on state-of-the-art equipment and also all different models of vehicles has been wonderful. One thing I'll also mention is that David Hall, who is the manager that we work with there, has said to us that this was the single best recruitment strategy they ever used at Driver's Village. They've hired nineteen auto technicians out of our classrooms, and so that's a wonderful opportunity. Students also choose to go on to higher education or go on to BMW school or different schools, or they can further their education. But it's a great way to support our local industry. We recently, based on the needs of the community and also based on the labor market, opened a heavy equipment repair and operations and diesel technology program. Talk about a program that we could never afford to run ourselves. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Tracy Road. But Tracy Road is in the east Syracuse. It's a very large facility with hundreds of millions of dollars worth of equipment that our students actually, as you can see, we have a classroom right onsite at Driver's Village. This is, can you imagine? I mean, a lot of this would be a dream for many people to be able to go to school every day and have the opportunity to work on heavy equipment, learn from technicians. Here's the classroom space that Tracy Road built for us that you can see right here. And it has worked out beautifully. So, when we go into a business, we don't focus on only one aspect of the business. We try and give exposure to all aspects of the business because a student may not know all aspects. They may think they want to do something in auto parts and then get into the work and realize, you know what? I'm really more interested in the sales piece or a different facet of the organization. So, we do try and give exposure to all the different parts of the profession. And here are just a sampling of some of the professions that students who graduate from our program in heavy equipment can go on to continue their education in or go directly into work and get more on-the-job training. So, we have the program at Tracy Road in the Syracuse area. We have a sister program, if you will, in the Homer area for our Cortland area districts at all county collision and repair. And here are some pictures from that location. Physical Therapy Professions is another program that we have. That's an embedded CTE program where the students have clinical opportunities at the VA, Kraus, Upstate, Guthrie, and Cortland for our Cortland locations. And they have the opportunity to practice their skills in the classroom before they go out into the field to do observations. Media, Marketing, and Communications, we have located at WCNY downtown. It's another example of a program that would be incredibly expensive for us to run because the cost of some of the equipment that they have in the studios is just exorbitant. But we have the opportunity to partner with WCNY, and our students have amazing opportunities to be involved in the filming of some live shows, things like the travel auction which goes on. Many opportunities for volunteer hours if they're interested in doing that. And we had a student a few years back who won, gosh, I think it was like twenty-five thousand dollars in scholarships from Ithaca College because of their work and experience that they got from this program. And so, we also have an early childhood education program. We have one that's located in Cortland at CAPCO. But we also have a location at our main campus at Thompson Road, rather. And then this year, our enrollment grew so much that this is kind of a unique idea and something I think will continue to grow. We expanded and started an early childhood education program in partnership with the Chinango Central School District. So, we now have students, because they have a UPK program there, going to the elementary school. And the UPK program is like the classroom for the early childhood education. So, looking at bringing it closer and closer to students. Some classrooms, some pictures from those classrooms. And so, just wanting to point out that those higher education partnerships, we're still doing a lot of work to help people understand that. And I'm sure that you're well aware of this, that students have the opportunity to earn college credit while enrolled in our CTE programs. And this is just an example of some of our programs and the credits that they have available to them. So, you know, at Media, Marketing, Communications at WCNY, students can earn eighteen college credits while getting that immersive opportunity right there at WCNY. And you can see the others. There's a couple at the bottom that are TBD that I'll talk about in a few minutes because those programs are still being built, and I'm really excited to be launching them this coming September. So, just a couple thoughts from, you know, it's one thing for us to come and say, oh, aren't these BOSI's programs great? But it's always better to hear from people who are involved or impacted by them in some way. So, I won't read this to you, but I'll give you a few moments to read what someone from Upstate who's in their physical therapy program, their PT as an assistant, had to say about the program. And so, here's a perspective from a parent. This also happened to be a parent of a student who was very shy and quite reserved initially and a little bit uncertain about attending the program, and this program really did help her blossom. And she happens to be the student who received the large sum of scholarships that I mentioned earlier. And from a perspective of a student. So, just wanted to mention the two new programs that we are going to be starting this September that we're very excited about. So, we have a program that's going to be starting at Mar Court Switches in Engineering Technology. And so, we've been working very closely with folks from Mar Court. And we've had more than thirty-five students' families in school districts attend and visit the program, have the opportunity to get exposed to it, and it's going to be, it's going to be a great, great opportunity. It's a very clean. I've been in many different factories and buildings, production facilities over the years. Probably one of the cleanest I've ever seen. It's a beautiful setting for students to work in, excellent technology. Mar Court helps make the switches for things like your fobs and your vehicles and different chips and pieces like this. So, as we know, that's going to be a growing industry in our area, to say the least. So, this will be a good program to get started. We're hoping to be able to continue to expand that work as we go forward. Here are just some other photos from the tour. And then lastly, we are excited to be launching a firefighting and EMT program, which is something there's been a lot of discussion over the years for the students. We are really excited. We'll have the opportunity in the first year to go through all the requirements to become BFO certified, for those of you who are familiar, but it's an exterior building firefighting operations, which is a rigorous test. And then also, in year two of the program, they will get all the curriculum to be eligible to sit for the EMT exam. So, whether people choose to go on to that for their career path or for volunteering, we're really excited about this program. And it's going to be in partnership with Madison County Emergency Management Training Center. And just so you know, overall, you have about a hundred and fifty-nine students who participate in career and technical education programs. So, that's, I think that's wonderful. Those are healthy numbers and shows that, you know, the word is getting out about the opportunities. And also, just want to echo Matt's appreciation for the partnership with Dan and the administrative team and the entire Board of Education. We really feel like when there's a a new idea or a thought out there, and we want to get feedback, that we can count on North Syracuse to, you know, step up and help us work through things and develop new programs and be innovative as well. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I just want to say thank you to Colleen and Matt. They've been very responsive, not only to North Syracuse but to any district. If there's an idea, if there's a thought that will benefit students, they will do the research, they will explore and bring it to light. So, right now, Mar Court is with us. We are exploring things with Micron right now. And BOSI's in North Syracuse, as well as other districts, are all partnering in the work.
Appreciate that, Dan. I'll just, I'll just close by saying this. I've been trying to get better at when I'm thinking something positive to say it in front of somebody. And so, I just want to give tremendous thanks to Colleen. You know, our deputy superintendent is really the heart and soul of the organization in a lot of ways. And to see her dive into these programs is really inspiring. So, just a little while ago, she knew nothing about firefighting or EMT services. And now she's talking about BFO certifications, like she's, I mean, it's, you know, the learning that goes on for all of us as we try to figure out what these programs are is part of the fun part of it, but nobody does it better than Colleen. So, can't do it without her.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hey, next we have Mr. Keegan and Mr. Bowles will be talking about our budget, our budget update.
Well, good evening. Dan and I are going to, at the risk of boring you, we're going to show you a couple slides you've already seen now twice. So, we'll move through them quickly so the directors can come up and spend some time with you. Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. This agenda is very similar to what we had up last week. Again, the considerations impacting our twenty-three, twenty-four budget, directors, strategic focus and initiatives, you'll see that. Estimated revenues, tax cap calculation. You can read the rest. So, Dan, you can switch over to the next slide. Again, trying to be in line with our strategic plan. These are the areas of focus. Again, our major goals, graduation rate, reading proficiency, and emotional competency. And some of the ways that we will get there is through cultural competency, student support systems, and professional learning. Again, currently, inflation is alive and well, and trying to make sure that we're doing things to address things in an inflationary environment. Feral stimulus aid is ending in September. CURSA goes away. We add a lot of supports during that time. And those things that we're looking at maintaining, we have to figure out ways to fund them, and ARP will be going away in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. If you saw the latest unemployment rates, I believe I saw what, three point five the other morning? There's a lot of people fully employed, so trying to find and retain the best people is a challenge, and there's a lot of competition out there. Labor contracts, we'll be dealing with a lot of contracts this year, and we've had declining enrollment. But we're looking at things leveling off, especially with Micron coming to town. So, with that, I'm going to turn things over to our director of English Language Arts, and that is Mr. Stone.
I'm used to sitting up here. So, good evening, everyone. Greg Stone, Director of Elementary Education and ELA. I've got two slides to present this evening around focus areas and priorities for the two areas I work with. So, I'm going to start with English Language Arts or ELA. You can see up there, there's really three focus areas that kind of encompass the district as a whole for the ELA side. And they're broken into those first three Roman numerals. So, at the K four level, everyone here is well aware that we've adopted Core Knowledge Language Arts or CKLA as our primary core program for tier one at the elementary level. So, our focus this year has been getting that off the ground, implementing a new program, supporting our teachers through that process, which is a tremendous undertaking when you adopt a new program. Our teachers are learning it as they go in a lot of ways. They're staying ahead of students by a couple lessons. That's expected. Next year, the focus is really going to be about making it much deeper. Teachers are more comfortable with it. There'll be stronger instructional planning, much more around the assessments and how that drives instruction. So, that's what's going on at the K four level. At grades five through eight, we are currently piloting two new ELA programs with the goal of adopting a new program for this coming school year at the grade five through eight level. So, the pilot ends in the next couple of months, and I'll be back here again to make a recommendation moving forward for next school year. So, at the five-eight level, next year's focus will be around supporting our teachers with professional development, getting that new program off the ground. And you'll see here, there's a cycle to all of this. So, we focused on K four first the next year. So, next coming school year, it'll be five-eight. The year after that, we can do nine-twelve. Part of that's a capacity component and making sure that we can do this and do it well. So, that's intentional. Looking at Roman numeral three, we're talking about grades nine through twelve. So, the priority in ELA there is aligning to the next generation ELA learning standards for New York State. And so, we are on track to meet the deadlines from New York State. So, this next school year, grades nine and ten will be identifying their essential standards, working on common assessments and unit planning. The following school year, it'll be grades eleven through twelve. So, everything works through a cycle where they can have the right level of support and also meeting New York State expectations. From a budget standpoint, my priority area is instructional coaches, and I want to speak a little bit to that this evening. So, our instructional coaches at the elementary level have done a tremendous amount of work supporting CKLA and the new program at that level. But I want to point out their role is not a literacy coach. Their role is really to support all aspects of instruction. So, that starts with building trust and relationships in our school. So, this school year, a lot of what our instructional coaches did was help our teachers with materials, resources, making sure they had what they needed, adapting resources, problem solving. There was a lot of that in the beginning, as with any new program. Next year, when we're looking at the K four level, they'll be supporting instructional practice. They'll be modeling more lessons. They'll be in classrooms some more. They'll be really refining a lot of the components of CKLA with our teachers. They're at the ground level, knowing what's going on. Like to point out something really positive. For the, over the last two years, we've been able to increase the level of professional development opportunities for our staff by three hundred percent, directly related to our instructional coaches being there to provide that onsite support in the classrooms, in the schools, after school, those types of things. But I mentioned our instructional coaches are also not just literacy. Next year, they'll be helping to support social studies as we move to integrate that into the elementary level. Down the road, the goal of these positions would also be to support social, emotional learning, diversity, equity, and inclusion. The WIN model, you know, anything that comes related to instructional practice. These would be the folks that would have that wealth of knowledge, and we build that over time. So, years down the road, we have some master level teachers in the buildings around restorative practices, all the areas we're looking at, not just siloed content. So, that's the budget priority for the ELA side. Just speaking to the elementary in general, so there's been a tremendous commitment from the board, our superintendent, myself, to make sure our class sizes and our teacher-to-student ratios are really positive, and that's been a real focus for the district over the last several years. So, that'll continue to be a priority focus. Another area I want to point out, we've spent a lot of time over the last couple of years aligning our AIS teachers to the actual needs of our students. So, when you go to school to school, you may not have the same number of AIS teachers in each school. Some buildings may have four, some buildings may have two, but it's based on the actual needs of where our students score nationally. So, we're providing equitable access to AIS for all of our students. But it's dependent on the level of need for each building, and so that's something we'll continue to really work toward. It's looking really good for this year and next year. And then the last piece here I would like to point out is, at the elementary level, there's been a huge commitment over the last couple of years and will continue to be. ELA and math has been a huge focus on providing high-quality tier-one instruction and assessments. Social studies is working on right now. Science, we've got a lot of initiatives going on there. So, by really shoring up our tier one, we should see a decrease in students that are qualifying for tier two or tier three because we're going to know exactly where students are. We're providing all of our students a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And so, our teachers know when a student's starting to slide in a certain area, we can identify it quickly, and we have a support network there to intervene so that our students aren't falling significantly behind and getting into a tier-two or tier-three cycle. We're keeping them in tier-two or tier-one. So, those are the focus areas and priorities for elementary and ELA. Are there any questions?
I, yeah, go ahead. I have two little ones.
Last board meeting, which I think was three weeks ago, Nick was here talking about his plan for programs for the advanced students. What do we have planned? Because CKLA program is in the classroom, but what are we going to do for the students that are above average in reading and literacy?
That is a favorite question of mine, and I will heavily speak to that. So, we have done a lot of work at the elementary level around the master schedules and building in an intervention block. So, currently, our instructional schedules at the elementary level all have a thirty-minute intervention block five days a week for all students, kindergarten through fourth grade. This year, given everything else that was going on, it's being utilized differently building by building. Next year's goal will be to have that dedicated block. We'll have the assessments now in place. We'll know where our students are with both ELA and math, and we can then intervene both for students that are struggling a bit. Students are struggling significantly, and to your point, Bob, we'll be able to provide five days a week intervention support for our students. They're at the highest level too, in order to excel their learning and push that even further within that grade level. So, all students will have an intervention next year, five days a week in all of our buildings.
Yeah, I just. Yeah, I just, two things you said, I just wanted some clarification. We had a social studies director here before and you, you'd referenced next year integration of social studies into, I assume, ELA. I, was it the same thing she was talking about? The more, I equated it to reading in the content area. It was the closest I could understand it, but that's the same thing you were referring.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, the, there's a social studies committee. I'm a part of that with Lisa Goldberg. And our goal is, is to, because we only have so many minutes in the day. How do we get social studies in? A lot of the content could be covered with what we're doing. So now we're just going to talk about how can we add these pieces in without adding to the instructional minutes and giving teachers what they need in order to meet those social studies standards. So integrating it within ELA is probably the most appropriate way to get that in there, meet those needs.
Okay, I'll repeat what I said to her, just to, just my only concern was when you get to the very early primary levels. My worry, and it's just something to watch, I'm not an expert, but you know, when these kids have the love of reading at their very early age, I don't want to see that muddied up with a lesson on Alexander the Great in kindergarten. And I'm sure that's not what we're talking about.
Not at all. You know what's interesting?
I'm a big fan of green eggs and ham. In fact, I would eat them every day, but.
I was gonna say, what's really interesting, when you go into classrooms now at the elementary level and you see what's being taught in the, the high content levels of, or the knowledge-based curriculum. So students are learning about ancient Greece, ancient Rome, they're learning about many different topics. Our students, for the most part, find it very, very interesting. Parents are actually calling me to say, hey, what, what is my child learning in school? Because they're coming home wanting to go check out books in the library about, you know, ancient Greece. So, so there is a connection there where our students are actually having some excitement. And yes, our intent will be highly engaging, fun lessons around still meeting the needs of our learners.
And so my next question, again, I had no questions until you spoke and then you said a couple of things that jumped out at me. So this probably will be answered later by our science person, but you said, science, we have issues. So I'm going to assume when you say issues, you're talking about maybe the next generation standards and.
Yeah, so I don't mean science that the district.
You meant by issues.
No, so, so we have scheduling issues with science. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. So there are a lot of scheduling constraints. No, no, I'm sorry. I said that inappropriately. There are some scheduling constraints. It is tough to fit science, social studies, ELA into that day. So that's, when John comes up, he'll speak to that. John Rice and I are working closely on how to integrate that into the schedule. It is, it's a bear to get that in there, but we've got some great ideas on the table. So that's what we're working toward.
Thanks for click. I just, I listened to everything you said.
And thank you for having me clarify that because I did not mean to intend that science is some issues there. It's not.
I have a question. I'm curious on tier three instruction. I'd like to know what it looks like and if you have the problem where there's so many tier three, sometimes you have to bump it down to tier two because you just don't have room in tier three with the, the needs of the students.
Yeah, absolutely. We work from basically our lowest up into our capacity. So students at tier three get intervention five days a week with a reading teacher in a remedial program that's research-based in a small group of three, no more than three. But like you said, the capacity exceeds what we were able to offer. So those who technically might qualify for tier three, if we can't fit them in the schedule, they would then bump to a tier two. But our tier two also gets five days a week with a certified reading teacher in a larger group setting of five to six. So it's, it's very similar probably to most districts where we get everyone we possibly can that qualifies for tier three in. But there are some students that might technically qualify for a tier three that are getting into a tier two. But in our district, we are, we are able to provide them five days a week, 30 minutes a day. Does that answer your question?
It, it does. I just find it interesting because from like school district to different buildings. I mean, I know the RTI, it clearly says on their guidelines, not mandates. In my particular district where I work, it is one to one. That is, and that could take up like 10 kids could take up a whole teacher's schedule. And I, I drew the line at five. I wouldn't do any more than five, but you know what I mean? We're just trying to do the best we can with, there's more needs than there are resources. So you try to juggle it the best you can. It's, I was just curious on what it looked like.
Yeah, and I would, I would just add to that to say, I think one of the most important pieces that we've really showed up over the last few years is not only our universal screener, but also our sub screeners. So if a student is qualifying for AIS, we then give them multiple additional screening tools to determine where exactly that deficit is. So we're actually making sure we're giving them the correct intervention. Whereas before, sometimes it was kind of a, well, we'll put them in this group and see how they do. We're really trying to target our instruction with a research-based intervention, monitor over 10 weeks. If they're not responding, we gotta try something else. So we've really tightened that up over the last couple of years and we're, we're really starting to see the fruits of that labor where we're seeing students actually move down tiers like it's intended. And when new students pop up, we're able to, to service them. So that's really coming to fruition.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hey, thank you.
All right, that's it. Thanks, everyone.
My name is Donna Marie Norton. Thank you. My title is Executive Director of Debt Accountability and School Improvement. But one of the things I, I am in charge of is the fine arts and that's why I'm here. It's definitely the more fun part of my job. So the first sentence up there, Don had asked us to think about what, where are guiding principles, you know, focus statement for each of the areas. It didn't take me long. I think I was probably the first email to come back, you know, for me to write what I wrote up there. And that came from the heart because what I've realized, and I am a data person, I work with numbers every day and all that. During COVID, we really found that the fine arts were what kept kids together. It's what brought them into school, made their days and really gave them opportunities to shine. So I've kind of fallen in love with the fine arts being the director there. So some things that we are doing, and there's always good stuff, but we are continuing to offer electives and we grow electives every year. So I put guitar up there because guitar one is going to be offered next year, and that's for the first time. We offered guitar this year in eighth grade. We had well over 100 students that signed up. And the best part of that was none of them came from existing already instrumental programs. So they were brand new kids to the instrumental program, which just made me super proud. We didn't lose anybody from band or orchestra. And this year, we're for 2324, we're offering it again. And we have a similar number of students that are going to be in eighth grade guitar. We're continuing on with that and we have a full section of students that are going to be taking guitar one, that's an ensemble course, for credit in ninth grade. My hope is to keep that going and have guitar two at 10th grade and so on and so on. If you've ever seen a guitar ensemble perform, it, it's pretty cool. So that's what we're hoping for. It was just a way to hook kids into music that hadn't already signed up for a program. Something that I didn't put up there that we did last year, but I figured you, you would want to know about it, is we started an accelerated program for visual arts. So we have eighth graders that are taking studio art and getting high school credit for it. The idea, this would open up electives at the other end. We have, you know, kind of small number of kids that are in some of the higher level art classes. And this would give kids more opportunities for electives at the higher end. So that was last year, but I thought you'd want to know about it because it's pretty cool. We did receive approval from state ed to look at the four plus one arts pathway. This is the book over here. I've read through about half of it. And there's lots of questions and things that we need to do, but that's going to allow students to get an advanced designation diploma without having to take all of the Regents exams. So it is an alternative pathway for kids. Currently, and I looked at the numbers in, in New York State, less than 1% of students are taking advantage of this. I'd like to see that increase, especially in North Syracuse. It involves portfolios and rubrics and teacher approval of projects. I don't know how many kids would be interested in it, but you know, if it gets a kid, at least one, a diploma where maybe they wouldn't have gotten it before, then it's worth doing. We are continuing to seek grant opportunities specifically at the Rocks campus. So what we found at Roxelle and Rox Middle is that students can't afford to rent instruments. And even though we do have some school loaned instruments, we don't have enough. And kids are kind of discouraged from even thinking about signing up for band or orchestra because they might think that they need to rent an instrument. So if we can get some grant money, and we've asked for a lot, I admit. Our hope is that no student at Roxelle or Rox Middle would have to rent. They would have a school loaned instrument at least for grades, you know, four through seven that they could play. And we believe that that's really going to increase the number of students on that campus that would be in the instrumental music. We are focusing our professional development on the fine arts staff. We worked really well this year with City Bosse's. That's going to change, but it'll be okay. City Bosse's offers a dedicated professional developer in the fine arts who happens to be a North Syracuse graduate. We are extremely proud of CJ Oliver. And he's worked really well with our faculty this year on some, you know, mission guiding statements. Before we jump into like heavy duty curricula standards work, we really kind of needed to center ourselves and he's been great. And his team with Will Jones, they've been great with helping us out. We're going to continue that with OCM next year. And then we're going to continue to fine tune our curricula. We are not the focus right now, fine arts. It is the four core that are the focus for curricula, but that doesn't mean that the work stops. So we're even a little bit ahead of where I thought we might be, working on our curricula, both vertical and horizontal, just to make sure that all of those big fat 11 standards that New York State has for the fine arts are covered. And that's it. Any questions for me?
We have one over here.
I do. So you said one, maybe one student might be interested in that four plus one arts path.
I'm hoping for more.
Yes, is there possibly a path through guidance where a kid is struggling because not every kid is a great test taker? And so it would be a better pathway for them?
I think that's the thought. There are multiple, these four plus one pathways. I'm just seeking the arts one because that's under my purview, but there are different, there's, I think there's a civics pathway, yeah, and CTE. There's other ones that other directors would be better able to tell you about. But it's, it's a little arduous of a process to get started. I think once it starts flowing, it, it shouldn't be too difficult. The portfolios and keeping all those records is really going to be the hard part. But now that we're using Google and we can upload things and keep them in drives, it's really going to make it a bunch smoother for us.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Okay, thanks guys.
Evening, everyone. Good to see you again. I actually have three slides, but I'll kind of move through them really quickly. Ones for English as a new language, one for world languages, and then one for professional development. Where we're going this coming year for English as a new language is really the, the word that I summed it up with is support. It's supporting a bunch of different areas. The first is for our staff for professional development. Our ENL teachers are faced with new situations where their English language learners, the influx of students that are coming in at entering level, regardless of grade or age, from different cultures. So that's a challenge for them. And of course, expanding this program with the numbers across the district has resulted in our general, general education teachers needing a great deal of more support around instructional practices with English language learners. So we're really trying to increase that quantity and quality. I've visited a couple of the buildings this year, like Roxelle that has a new program with it. Just went to a Gillette staff meeting recently to kind of share with them some information. We're working on finalizing a contract with the Arburn about some professional development over the summer that we're going to make available to, in a number of different ways, everything from in-person to online, to podcasts, to book studies, a lot of different avenues for professional development around English as a new language. And then also the support around communication engagement between us and the families, whether that's some of the translation tools, whether it's interpreters, whether that's hosting more of the events that get these families in that also meet the regulations around homeschool communication with English as a new language. We just had a great, great event that Kim Rice up to high school kind of spearheaded and it was fantastic. I, I paused for a minute on that event just to talk about because what was really beautiful about that evening was not just the diversity, but watching the students really find a safe place. You could see their, their facial expressions reflected the safety they felt in expressing their culture and seeing other students that maybe during the school day, they're less able to do, less able to let their guard down. And there was really that connection for them between each other. And so that was a great thing. So we want to bring the, the parents in a little bit. We're actually exploring the summer school program for ENL this summer, having a parent component for some of our newcomer parents. If we can pull that off through a Title III immigrant grant, that's giving us a little bit more, more resources. And finally, the third bullet there is around accuracy and efficiency. It's supporting the system we have in place to monitor. You've been very gracious with approving the staff increases. And I'm hoping that we are in an okay place for this coming year. I will tell you, as I've said that during this budget cycle, I've got an email saying, hey, we've, we've got four new English language learners at the junior high since the end of January. We have gotten two today at the elementary level that I received emails on, right, Mrs. Florio? Right, we're, we're going back and forth with placements. We have, I, I've heard rumor of two more at the high school as well this week. So it's somewhat of a moving target. Right now, we are adequately staffed to meet the minimum regulation of minutes that the state requires with some wiggle room in some places to provide more support. The challenge is that change in the profile of the English language learner coming in at an entering level at the secondary schools is requiring so much more than just the minimum number of minutes. So it's a scheduling challenge. It's a proficiency challenge. Remember their minutes are based on proficiency level, not grade level. So we can have somebody come in at 10th grade who requires 720 minutes a week because they're at an entering level, number one. There's a lot of variables with that. We're also seeing that influx of English language learners that have disabilities. So that creates some scheduling and programmatic issues that impact staffing. So we want to get the system really clean about our data that we're, that we're sending, that we're organizing so that the communication products that we're using are effective when we send out the messages. So that the, um, the tracking of their, their growth and their proficiency, the projections into the next year are as accurate as we can get them, knowing that it changes.
Yeah, before you go off the slide, just how many different languages are we servicing now? What do we see growing? Which, is there any specific one that's growing?
Sure. What I can tell you is that we have 25 languages identified as a primary language. That doesn't necessarily mean that those are all are being spoken regularly. It's just, but we do have 25 different languages that are currently reported as being a part of our district. Probably the fastest growing are the, the Arabic languages right now. A, a decrease about five years ago or so, there were some of the Asian, Southeast Asian languages were on the increase. But the, the Middle Eastern languages, Arabic, Dari, Farsi, those languages are, and the challenge with that, and Dan knows this because we're, we're looking into right now, possible research project is these are low incidence languages. So when you're in New York City and you're in Miami, there's a heavy concentration of Spanish. And so all the resources are bilingual for Spanish and English. We have 25 languages with a few students with each of those languages. So to have translations into 25 languages is a bigger challenge when it's, you know. So we're seeing that. We haven't quite seen the Ukrainian influx yet, like I shared at the last presentation, but it's starting, it's starting.
Thank you.
So that's our focus in ENL is really support in, in the areas of PD, family engagement, and then in our system, supporting the communication. For world languages, if I can sum our work up for next year, it's really around alignment, around vertical and horizontal alignment. This department is, is a group of excellent teachers that are really, they're so knowledgeable. They've been teaching me about this area. I joke with them many times, other than six months of French in junior high, I'm really not the guy for world languages. So they've been very patient with my slow learning curve on understanding the standards. Where we are fortunate in world languages right now is that the state has just adopted its new standards. Our district, our world languages department is really almost ahead of the curve on matching our instruction and our curriculum and our practice to that. We have an incredible number of teachers in our world language department that are leaders at the state level with these organizations. They're presenting at the state conferences. Pam's behind me and she is facilitating some of the work with a few different organizations. She's on the board. And, and this is true 712 with French and Spanish. So we are very deeply involved in what the state's doing and we're well aligned to that. So when we look at some of our e-doctrina work that's coming up in the units, some of the units at the state standards in our department have already been functioning from in some ways are almost more complex than what we've got in e-doctrina. So that work has started there. The goal is to have all of our units from checkpoint A set by the fall and then checkpoint B the second year and checkpoint C the third year, which will align with the state's timeline for when everything needs to be in place and implemented across the board. So we're looking at that. At the same time, we are up on the pilot schedule for re-adoption. That's great because we're looking at resources that are going to align to the new standards and to the curriculum that we're putting in e-doctrina. So it's all kind of dovetailing in this next three-year window. I will tell you, we are looking at that textbook adoption as less of a hard. I will tell you, we are looking at that textbook adoption as less of a hard copy and more of the resources are available online because they are so much more authentic and strongly aligned to world languages than a book. So we're hoping to find those types of resources that match up with the new standards. So I'm sure I'm leaving things out. I'm trying to rocket through here. All right. So for PD, this is probably a combination of that first word support and alignment, you know, coming together. We want to make sure that our professional development is now really streamlined and aligned to the strategic plan. So that wherever we're spending our time, our money, our resources, they're really targeted towards those three goals. And they're targeted towards those three goals at different levels, at the district level, at the building level, and for the individual's growth. And so we want to make sure we have the alignment. We're trying to expand those offerings. We have a number of different things going on this year with diversity, equity, and inclusion with our administrative team, with our new committee that started from district-wide initiative. And we're expanding that into next year, the summer having PD offerings and, and we're maintaining that, that widespread the choice of PD for, for what people need. We have a survey out to the staff right now about what their interests and needs are for the summer. We've had close to 100 responses already and that was put out just before the break. So we're looking to see if we're responsive to that, seeing what we can offer through Bosse's. We had some great response to the online technology offerings last year to Learner's Edge. Hoping to continue that diversity of offering and the way we offer it, but also target it towards what we need and what we're focused on. And the third thing is again, systematizing things, improving the organization. Part of that is so we can process things quicker. I've had this conversation with Dan many times and with the CLP and with Mr. Carrilla. We are seeing since COVID, a change in how PD is offered. It's the amount of virtual PD that's now available is just exponential than prior to the pandemic. And what that means is the volume of what people are taking is increased three to fourfold because they used to take things in larger chunks by coming in person for six or seven hours to a full day PD. Now they're able to take two hours, one hour, three hour here and there. And so that's more touch points for processing all the professional development. So the volume has increased significantly. But the variety and the value has also increased as well. So we want to try and find a, create a system that can manage that more efficiently and productively this next year. That's a real quick overview of three big areas. So any questions you have for me about where we're going next year? Be glad to answer those.
Nope, no, I don't see any. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. We were just giggling because Tim got up and he thought he was going to present for special ed. So we're like, okay, go ahead. So I'm Valerie DeFlorio, an executive director for Pupil Personnel.
And I'm Julie Dermody. I'm one of the directors.
So for our presentation tonight, we're going to start with focusing on how special education is working, you know, working with the three pillars, the strategic plan, through the collaboration for graduation rate, reading proficiency and emotional competency. So as you've all heard us say numerous times, special education is a service, not a location. And, you know, we're always talking about how our students are general education students first and that they receive the service second. So using that, we really try hard to make sure that when we are sitting around talking and having conversations in our office and looking at how to program for students throughout the district and any decisions that we're making, whether they're done in special ed referral team meetings, whether they're done at CSC meetings, whether they're done at team meetings, whether we're talking with other directors, whether we're talking with other administrators. Our goal is to always make sure that we are looking at graduation rates, reading proficiencies. How are we supporting our students with their emotional competency? And I think we've done a really nice job this year at really trying to hit more through our, working collaboratively with our other directors and ensuring that some of our students are closing our, trying to work towards closing our gaps a little bit more. And I'm going to have Julie talk a little bit more about that, but we've really spent a lot of time this year reassessing and looking at our specially designed instruction and what that looks like and how we can continue to work on, you know, our strategic plan. And even before graduation rate and reading proficiency and all of these things are in there, those are things that special ed has always been driven towards. Because as you all know, we kind of encompass all areas. We kind of go across, we go across social studies, we go across science, we go across math, we go across ELA. So we will continue to do that. We will continue to make sure the discussions that we have at our meetings are always child-centered. We will continue to ensure that the services that we recommend are individualized for the students that we're talking about. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the second bullet to Julie.
Good evening. So this, as we've talked about so far, I think Mr. Stone touched on it as well, is engaging with the RTI model in our schools so that we are fully utilizing all of the supports that are available within the general education curriculum and that we're using the RTI model of screening, the progress monitoring, and then the database decisions before we move students to a special education model. And that's important, obviously, to follow the district plan with increasing graduation rate and making sure our students are proficient readers. Our third bullet is.
Been spending our money on.
That's, all right. So we're building on, with the RTI model, we talked about in the fall when we came about the different, the continuum of services within special education. And one of the things that we've made a big investment in through our office is the Really Great Reading Program for the kindergarten to fourth grade teachers in order to have a supplement to the general education curriculum to create, fill in the gaps that they might have in their reading instruction or in their literacy. In addition to that, we have just purchased Power Up Literacy for the fifth to eighth grade teachers in order to support literacy at that level as well. The third bullet with the high-quality professional development to our teachers will be offered, well, it's offered throughout the year, but offered a focused offer in the summer around specially designed instruction, bringing some of our teachers who have really taken on the CKLA curriculum and created specially designed lessons that allow students to have access to that curriculum. As you've heard, it's very rich in content. And there are many teachers in our district who have really jumped on that and been able to provide really rich instruction to their students to gain access to that and to promote that academic achievement. We're also hoping to have collaboration among the teachers so that they can share resources and share their ideas around that curriculum, all in the service of filling in learning gaps and providing that rich instruction for reading proficiency throughout the district. Are there any other questions for us?
Yeah, I have some questions. So I always think about, I want to get a T-shirt one day that says Maslow before blooms. I think about, you talk about the emotional competency of students with disabilities. So before any learning could take place, students need to feel safe, staff needs to feel safe. What, what do you do to promote that?
Well, in our elementary buildings, we do have the second step curriculum that is taught by the counselors and the social workers. We also have provided extensive TCIS training, therapeutic crisis intervention training to staff members who have, who have asked for that throughout the district so that they can provide a therapeutic response and a proactive measures within the classrooms to avoid conflict and to avoid stress for students. But really, I think it's our second step curriculum and our embedded work with counselors and with social skills work within the classrooms that's going to provide that feeling of safety for students.
I think the other thing that we've also done is we've been able to tap into, you guys have been very generous with all the additional supports through the social workers and through all the other agencies that have been implemented in our pro, in our class, in our buildings. And through that, we've had some really great discussions on what services we're able to tap into. And because of that, it's been a really collaborative approach for students who, when we have a student who is in crisis, we don't just have to turn to a single individual anymore. We now have teams of people who work together to help that come from different areas. So we have social workers, we have school psychologists, you know, we have outside agencies who have that mental health component that can really help. We're back, how many years ago, we had maybe one person. It was typically just a building administrator being called in to do this. So now we have other people that are able to help and support. So I think that's been a huge help over the last few years. And, you know, we credit you guys for being able to support the buildings with that. So I think that's been a way to help really support the emotional competency of our students. I think also, we've been really trying to work with, during the summer, Julie did some training on trauma-informed instruction. So she kind of, she did a couple workshops on that. So before the school year even started, that was part of the summer programming. So I think really that recognition that what were the students that we're getting, not even students with disabilities, just across the board. We're really seeing students who have more mental health and how to address that across the board. So it's, it's all students coming into the schools feeling safe, feeling secure. And how do we do that together? So they're not in, in little pockets, but across all areas, across all schools in general.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, Phil. I'm a huge proponent of responsive classroom. And one of the ideals of responsive classroom is the way that the adults interact with each other are directly, it directly affects the children. And so I guess I just want us to be mindful of when kids go through these, the adults that are supporting them are also going through this. And what are we doing to support our adults on the front lines? Because it's not easy.
Oh, no, not at all. You know, so real quick, I know we're, I got it, we have to go on. So we were actually at our last special ed council meeting. And every year they, at one of the meetings, they bring in all the agencies around the counties. And to one of the questions that one of the directors had asked was, you know, what, is there anybody here out of all the agencies that we have here? Is there anybody here when we have a student in crisis who can just, we can call and you can come to the school and help us? Is there any, you know, is there an agency here for anybody in crisis? Can you come and help us? And, you know, we had a couple of people saying, yes, but you have to have a contract first and then you have to see how much that's going to be and how many hours. And I kind of piggybacked off it. I said, that's not what we're asking. And I said to her, I said, you know, we're at a point now where we have situations in our schools where it's beyond what we can do as schools. It overrides what we in an educational setting have been given the abilities to do. We're looking for you as mental health providers just to come in and do some crisis interventions and just help us and know that the student can stay in school with us and every, and maybe do some debriefing for adults. And those were my words. I said, is there anybody here who's able to do this? And we got crickets, you know, so that was, and we were like, okay. So in what, somebody said, well, we're getting to that. We're trying to work on that. So I think that's where we do lack. You know, I'm with you. I think, you know, as a society still, we're, you know, we're getting this, coming into us to help and we're, you know, still saying, well, okay. Who's there to still help us when this is happening? So, you know, I do, I'm with you on that.
Yeah, I think that this, what goes a long way is us as leaders, you know, supporting and saying those to uplift staff. I mean, this is my life. This is what I've lived. And, you know, I see, I see what you do. So it's, it's a difficult position at all levels.
Any other questions?
I'm allowed five minutes. So I'm going to use it somewhat with special ed and it's, it's just a compliment to the director, Val DeFlorian. This district has grown because of you in special ed. When I started teaching in 1971, there were very few special education students. They weren't allowed to come to school. Rosemary Ollender, you have developed a program that is second to none. You can go online and parents do this. Where do you want your child to go to school if they have some needs in special education? And North Syracuse is at the top. And I don't know if people realize, you don't just do special ed. I know through Bosse's that you are involved in innovation tech. You love that program. We send students from our school district there. Stars is your favorite. I know that because I see you at the graduation every year. But thank you, Valerie. Spend some more time at Panther Lake. But thank you so much for what you have done for this district and for the students. It's not an easy job. Special ed is not easy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, you're welcome to go.
Well, good evening. I'm Tim Benarski, Director of Athletics and Co-Curricular Programs. My, my focus area for, for next year is opportunities. And some of them are internal and some of them were for athletics are within Section Three and New York State Public High School Athletic Association. But the, one of the main focuses is the southern portion of the district. And we started this, this year kind of teaming up with the Rising Rock Stars program, getting our coaches involved in their off-seasons to get our students in the southern part of the district more involved with athletics and activities. We have had Saturday programs for basketball, lacrosse, coaches have gone down and done intermurals this summer. Coach LaChia is doing a volleyball camp at Rocks, trying to get the students involved in the sports that they may not in any other capacity. So that is one of our main focuses. From a monetary standpoint with athletics, NIS, or NISFA, New York State Public High School Athletic Association in Section Three. I'm kind of going to jump down to the bottom to started girls wrestling. And next year, looking to bring the flag football here in, into Section Three. So those are two opportunities that I hope that we have the opportunity to get involved with along with our bordering schools, you know, the Liverpool FM, West Gen Aveville. Going back to the top, we started esports at CNS this year and it just took off. The participation is unbelievable. The kids love it. The advisors love it. It's really neat. If you ever get the opportunity to come watch an event, they're, they're really good at what they do. So we're looking to expand that into the junior high school for next school year. The second one down, Unified Bowling. We had this on the docket right before COVID and then COVID hit. And we did not get the opportunity because it went on a standstill. But we are one of the districts that's not involved and we need to be. We have Unified Basketball, which is starting up in a week or so. So that will be exciting. If you get an opportunity to come watch them, it's, they're a lot of fun. And then I know Donna Marie had talked a little bit about musical instruments in the elementary levels. But also as we get into the marching band, some of our instruments go back to maybe even when Mr. Crabtree started school teaching in 1971. So they're old. And we need some replacement equipment and getting it on a, a schedule where we are replacing over the years and not a big lump sum at once and developing that plan. And then, as you know, the next few years are going to be a little different around the high school with the, the renovation and the addition of the pool. So, you know, myself and the facility manager, we're, we're working, we have a couple of different schedules for the junior high Rocks. And we have unified it to help the coaches and ourselves know where they're going to be for practices and, and games. Cause the, the next couple of years will be a little different, particularly in the winter seasons. Particularly in the winter seasons. So that's my first slide for athletics and co-curricular. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah, I have two questions. I'm sorry, I I should know and I don't. I don't know what esports are. If you could explain that to me. Then my other one is any talk or thought about pickleball?
Sorry.
So esports is video gaming and it's and it's competitive and. I don't know. I don't remember all the games that we have. Su- Super Mario Kart, Smash Brothers. No, it's it's all video, but yeah.
Yeah.
But it is competitive and and I know we ended up being for the first year, we ended up being state ranked in the top ten. So it was it was good. And pickleball, it's not here yet, but I know it's coming because it's it's really big and it's growing. We do do it in physical education class and yeah, yeah. So at all levels.
Yeah, there's actually colleges giving scholarships for esports.
There is tons of scholarship money for esports right now. Yep. 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 So health services, last April, I think we hired Peg Miller and she's done a wonderful job as our district nurse practitioner. So we've we've tried to clean up some of our. Systems and making sure we're in compliance with the New York State regulations and you know, that's her expertise, not mine. She's done a great job with our board policies. In fact, we were in compliance with an Arcan one and we just added that at the last policy committee. Or a recommendation for one. And also providing professional development for our nurses and Peg. And I have got the opportunity to get three or four and putting in them on a rotation to attend the New York State School Nurses Conference. And Peg is actually going to attend the national one this year in in late June. You know, having her has been a tremendous help within for our school nurses as a resource. And obviously, our relationship with Dr. Draker has been great, too. And then the last thing for the health services is just monitoring, you know, our student nurse ratio within the buildings, especially after the pandemic. So we'll be taking a look at that throughout this year and next. Any questions within the health services?
Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Science.
Good evening. My name is John Rice. I'm the Director of Science and CTE. Greg Stone alluded to an issue in science earlier. I can assure you that. It is a scheduling issue, not a program issue. So. I'd like to start out first by talking a little bit, a little bit about our elementary science program. We utilize the Smithsonian. Science kits and. The Carolina curriculum, which is purchased through closer through OC and BOSI. So we save quite a bit of money on that. And the kids really, the program is based on on inquiry, hands-on approach. That really fosters students' natural curiosity to explore, evaluate. Problem solve and analyze specific engineering and science principles. But has kind of alluded to earlier, the biggest issue is. Finding the time in our elementary science. Programs or elementary programs to really carve out some time that we can. On a consistently and consistent manner, provide the. Science. Instruction that is really needed in this district, especially with Micron coming on board. I think it's very important that we. You know, look into scheduling issues. I know we, you know, some of the teachers you and it was brought up earlier, CKLA. Some of the science content can be done there and around that program. However, it's really important that we utilize that hands-on. Program for kids to get excited about science, explore science and and get a good understanding of the critical thinking skills that are involved. That go along with the engineering and scientific principles that they're really exploring. It's an issue that we have that we've been working on. This past year, we spent a lot of time. Developing pacing guides at each level, really. Trying to drill down to the essential lessons that we need to cover in each grade level. And this is primarily K through four because there's. Like I said, there's no real time carved out necessarily at all, at all grade levels. So. That's one of the issues that we're wrestling with right now, and hopefully we will tackle it this upcoming year. Are there any questions in regards to the science program? The elementary science program? Bob, I thought you exhausted all your questions.
It too. We're done with the, you know what, I'm going to wait till.
Okay, well, the second thing, the second bullet up there, I'm very excited about. Has has alluded to or has pointed out up there, we have a greenhouse renovation and pond restoration project, which primarily. Involves trying to. Provide. The native plants and kind of get rid of the invasive plants that we have around the pond and the pond area. With the greenhouse renovation, we're hoping to really do a lot of propagation, plant propagation, which means grafting and cutting plants and. Working with different techniques to really understand how we can develop those plants. Also, we're looking at. Expanding our hydroponics up at the high school again with the idea that the greenhouse is going to be renovated. It's. Probably hasn't seen any work since the building was built. And I know there's a roof project this upcoming year as part of that. Renovation and we're hoping again that a lot of those issues with a greenhouse can be addressed then. This is a multi-year undertaste undertaking that the teachers have put together. And with that pond restoration, they're looking at introducing a solid surface, whether it's gravel or whether it's. A deck near this, near the pond where they can collect their water samples, soil samples. And again, use utilize that data on a long term. You know, for many years and again, to enhance the. The pond and the area around it. So multiple classes can use it, whether it's chemistry, whether it's living environment, our AP bio and chemistry classes. That that's just again, some of the. Classes that would utilize it one way or another.
Within environmental program, I I don't know if you're aware, John, that. I'm trying to get up here in Adog County, but Cortland has a tremendous environmental program. Through BOSI's is probably, BOSI's was here tonight, is probably the most popular program in BOSI's. When I go to graduation, there is thirty, forty students. So I I'm just thinking, I love that you have a greenhouse and so forth, but you might. Work together on that because it's 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 a very popular problem and I wish BOSI's did have it here.
And that gets great idea. And again, BOSI's is primarily for juniors or is for juniors and seniors. So. Most of the classes that are going to take advantage of this would be our living environment classes, our ecology classes, environmental classes. You know, that are really geared for sophomores and juniors. So again, it could be a stepping stone.
Well, elementary science, you know where I stand there. Okay, Nick knows I started out as math, but. My last twenty years, I I. Worked with Dale Haasser, who I saw a couple of weeks ago and he said to say hi, and also Jim Wenham, who, just like Rosemary Olander with special ed. They really started the science program in this school district. And the key at the elementary level is not reading about it, but doing about it hands on. Ms. Sarah Bowles was my first student to ever get a perfect score, as you know. On the New York State hands on and also the the multiple choice. This has been an issue in this district. Teachers are elementary teachers. I I couldn't do it now. They have so much on their plate with social, emotional, with a new reading program. I'm hoping this can be worked out because. Science, we're getting ready for. A company come in here and you see that we're going to have this special thing. If you looked on TV, what was it? Was all hands on. Mike Rotten's all hands on, all hands on. So. Your high school program is amazing. The teachers at CNS and the junior high and 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 at the middle schools is wonderful. We do have to get more hands on. I know there's a teacher at Rocks Middle or it was Rocks Middle that did some really great work with that. So. I'll be looking forward to how we can work that together to get more hands on. And also thank you for all your help with. The high school program when they go on compete against other schools. Thank you for that, too. Science Olympia.
You 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 mentioned something earlier with the performance exams and Mrs. Bowles or Miss Bowles getting the one hundred on the performance and written exam. And of course, many of you probably know that. The performance exam was phased out this year. The fourth grade test is being moved to fifth grade next year. So one of the. Dilemmas that we had that the state introduced this year was we had to get four investigations in prior to the new test coming to fifth grade next year. They just released the. Those four investigations for fifth grade and then there's also four investigations for eighth grade this following year. It's recommended they they given, they've been given at the grade level in which they're, the instruction takes place, those standards are covered. And two of those were in third grade and of course, the third graders, it's already passed. So. We had to think quick and we did have two retired teachers come in and do a wonderful job of of implementing the science investigations to both third and fourth grade. You mentioned that. There's a lot on teachers plates. We didn't want to burden them with one more thing this year and we felt that that worked out very well with those. Two retired teachers coming in and going through each of the elementary schools to implement the third and fourth grade investigations. To be on par for next year for that fifth grade new assessment. The next slide. Has to do with career and technical education. Actually, Mr. Cook and Ms. Vigiano covered some of that with CTE and their career and technical education courses that OC and BOSI's, by which I'm sure. You know much about and went to some of those programs together. We do take pride in. Actually introducing the CTE programs to our students in ninth grade before they start making their career choices because as most of you know. The CTE programs are reserved for juniors and seniors, but if you wait till then to really look into it or you've met a sophomore, sometimes it's a little too late to. Make that career choice. So or maybe choose that pathway. So. We do spend time in ninth grade introducing that and having BOSI's come in and do some presentations to our students. At the high school, we we offer six strands in business education and family consumer sciences. Those six strands include finance and marketing for business education and then in family and consumer science. We offer human development, all aspects. Interior and fashion design and then food and nutrition. So. We have about forty to fifty students that complete that program, but a third of our students in grades nine through twelve take at least one. Or tend to take at least one CTE course each year. So about a third of our students. Actually get get exposed to at least one. This past year, we had about a hundred and seventy students take at least two or more courses. And then the last bullet. So with Micron coming in, of course, it's been talked about a few times tonight. What's Micron bringing in besides a lot of excitement? One of the things that's happening at Anadog Community College. As you see up there, they're developing a one-year electromechanical technology certificate and a two-year associate's degree in electromagnetic technology. We're hoping to. Partner with them and offer concurrent enrollment or dual credit courses in science. And technology and math and English to. Provide some of those credit bearing classes towards either the certificate or towards the two-year degree. And that would start in twenty twenty four. So it wouldn't happen this upcoming year. They're still putting together the program, putting together. The curriculum and we would hope to come on board. During the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Are there any questions on that last slide?
I have a question about the K four. Is the district looking at? Just to follow up what Bob said about there's so much on teachers' plates and trying to fit it in and I feel like we're cramming things down kids throats and that's not helpful. Is there pardon?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, don't. Um, is there like areas like maybe in the reading curriculum, the science curriculum, maybe the math curriculum? Maybe even SEL that we could streamline and. You know, are we looking at that as a district to see?
Actually, at one of our last directors meeting, we did talk about interdisciplinary connections and how to try and connect that. We brought up the CKLA earlier as possible content. We did streamline a lot of our lessons this past year or the essential lessons with our pacing guides. But we're also looking at other options, possibly teachers partnering up where one teacher teaches social studies. To two classes and one teacher teaches the science to classes. So it might take one of those areas, those discipline areas off one of the teachers plate. It allows one teacher to get more familiar with the curriculum and and probably benefit both the teacher and the students.
Thank you.
I I had something on the last slide that I never tried to slide in. Well, Mr. Crabtree was talking about Cortland having the environmental program and stuff. ESF is just on the road. Has there been conversation partnering with them or getting them involved at all with this environmental program?
We haven't to, we actually used to have a program with ESF. Unfortunately, when a teacher left that program. Also kind of went by the wayside, but yes, we we were hoping to reach out. I just reached out to actually Syracuse University. Had a conversation with sister and Dodger about coming in and doing some professional development along around the phenomena based approach and inquiry, but also. Hopefully forming some partnerships.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. In transportation.
Good evening. My name is Matt Conti, Director of Transportation. I'm just like to say, the transportation, North Syracuse Transportation Department transports just under nine thousand students to over forty locations with about a hundred and forty vehicles. You're just about under two hundred staff members. Trying to provide a safe, proficient, on-time service with a smile. So this year we are we're. Transforming or transferring over from VersaTrans to a Traversa, which is a new system. Why are we doing this? It's a more cutting edge system. It's web-based. It's also iCloud. On server, which was saving the district some costs and it's being maintained by Tyler Technologies, which is the the provider. The saves, it's going to be more friendly to our staff is that when it's web-based. You know, right now our hours are expanding throughout the last ten years I've been here. So. We start probably at five o'clock in the morning and extended to seven o'clock at night. Now we have trips going on on the weekend. So our dispatches will be able to use. The the computer system or the routing system at home being web-based. So that's another plus. Right now we're crawling with it. We just really got into it. We're going to walk next year and then start running with it. So. I want to say right now, we're really learning. We're we merged all the information from one system to the next. We're getting very proficient with it. Some perks for it is is in the future that the public or the parents would be able to have on their smartphones, see what time a vehicle is coming. So we asked them to be out five minutes before they would be able to track their vehicle, their their student's vehicle. And see what time they're coming and they could put their child out five minutes before for running five minutes later, ten minutes late. So those are some perks for the public. It's just more advanced with mapping. It's more advanced with the GPS system. So it's all synced. So that's why we we kind of took that particular action and we wanted to be cutting edge. So Don is always asking us to make sure that we're looking in the future, making sure that. making sure that we're going to be growing and not left behind. Prior to this, we stayed with the system a little bit too long and things started to drop off. So we're just staying up with technology and being proficient with technology. Other school districts after we took on this to move forward with this program have actually followed us and went with Tyler Technologies too. Another exciting thing is we're moving into electric vehicles. So I have to say I was very nervous about it, but I have to say Don and I invited all of our vendors. There's three major vendors for school buses. We invited them in. They had a presentation for us. They showed us what they're doing, how they're doing it, what the perks are. We think we're, we found one that has a little bit more experience than the others, gave a very good presentation and we've ordered vehicles, gas vehicles off from this year because the service that they were providing, how they're situated right now in central New York, our other vendor is not really doing the things that need to be done. So we're going to be moving over to New York Bus Sales, which is our Bluebird Vehicles. I think we're making the right choices on that. So like exploring new vendors, getting to know them. We're going to a lot of discussion sessions. Dan, Don and I went to a Bosse's electric bus and facilities and our charging station discussion. They had a lot of good information there. Nicerda was there. Department of Transportation, National Grid, the State Education Department. Me personally, I was very impressed with the questions that they were asking, the information they were providing. They were talking about how we would transition over to this and they were talking about aid, very detailed about trenching, about facilities, about how they might come together and give us money, money or, or funds for buildings and transportation. So I was very impressed by this. My organization, New York's Association for Pupil Transit, they've invited us and all of the directors and supervisors to different discussion sessions. And we've been finding out more information as we go. So we're learning a lot as we go. And we're not jumping in. We're not going to be the first ones to, to take on all these responsibilities. We're going to look to see what's the best decision and move forward. There are some mandates that we would have to follow by the State Education Department. Those are timeframes of when we have to purchase vehicles, when we have to have certain vehicles on the road and we're going to follow those the best we can with the information coming out. Last one here is the district, our current gas fleet. We're going to make sure that we're keeping this fleet in tip-top shape where years before when we were in year eight or nine, we really didn't evaluate the vehicle for additional time, but we'll do that this year or these next coming years. We might have some, you know, things repaired sooner, just talking about bodywork and on rust, just to do some preventive maintenance on those. So the vehicles will be extended in their life, which we will probably need because we won't be able to buy gas vehicles or diesel vehicles in the future. So that and a million other things I forgot to say. Any questions?
And just to that, you made me feel a little better about that second bullet. There's a ton in there and you, you, you sounded almost I don't want to say positive, but like there's a light at the end of the tunnel. That's powered by electricity, that kind of lighter. Is it a fire? I don't know, but it's, you see, you, you ran off a bunch of numbers. You say a hundred and forty vehicles?
Basically a hundred and forty vehicles.
So that's, that's a lot of vehicles to charge. So that this, that's an area that concerns me, but I'm, I'm hoping there's flexibility and timelines that you referenced on the way we, as we go forward, because
I want to say I was a little nervous too when we first heard about this, but then we started going to these talking sessions and North Syracuse is positioned very well. So we've right now looking for grant money. We're involved in writing grants with different entities. So we're, we're on top of that. We had National Grid come in and look at our facilities. We can have the right amount of electricity come into our, our location. We're on the good side of the grid. We're all planning different things. I'm working very closely with Don and Matt Irwin, our Facilities Director, to see what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. But we're doing it at a pace I think will be have times to grow and to learn and to do it right, like Don says, the first time, not the second or third time around.
Well, thank you for that information.
Yeah, yeah. So you're going to Traversa. What are you using now?
VersaTrans, which is very similar to Traversa.
All right. And, and we have GPS technology on the buses now or they'll have to be added?
No, no, we, we currently do. It's, it's going to be a little bit different, but the, the same. Honestly, what I could say, the difference between VersaTrans and Traversa is the mapping system. There's different ways to do things about routing. This is just a, a better, a more accurate routing system program throughout maps and the GPS where it's used a little bit differently than VersaTrans. It was kind of two separate entities. Now it's really just one entity.
Thank you.
So there really is a company called VersaTrans and one called Transversa.
It's Tyler Technologies. That's just the, the, the name of the particular programs. I, I just want to just say here, as the Director of Transportation, I've been with the district for twelve years, worked in a lot of different areas in the private sector and now in the public sector. And I guess say the support I have here with the, the school district is, is just phenomenal. So working with over two hundred people in my facility, there's people here who've been thirty years, people here for five years or two years. It's just good working together here, but also to have the support of the, the district office. And I have to say, I, I follow directions and I follow them well, but to have some leadway here with the community and working things out and doing things and learning as I go along here, not being micromanaged. I'm very confident that we have, I think, one of the safest operations. I think we have, we have the largest operation in central New York. And I think one of the best run, not by myself, but by my people and the district office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I want to make a comment. No, it's, it's to the administration. These have been wonderful presentations. I think we need to start earlier next year. It's wonderful that the board got to meet every one of the directors and look at what their proposals are for, for two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four and and I would have liked to talk a little bit longer. And so I know our first presentation next year is the end of February, maybe the next board meeting. We start with three or four and schedule a little bit differently.
That's a great, great suggestion. I, I, I just wanted to say thank you so much to our directors and thank you to the board for, for listening. You know, we, when we're in the budget process, we spend so much time crunching the numbers and, and, and looking at things, but these are the discussions we have. It's about the kids and the teachers and the, and the workload that, that everybody's trying to juggle. And so the, the budget conversations quickly leave the numbers and go into this realm of what's the best way to educate kids and manage staff and manage resources? And so thank you for listening to that because it, it really, it's, it's the meat behind the budget. So I, I, I don't, I, I don't want to, I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but I want to, I want to share with you that with the help of the directors and our building principals, Cabinet has been able to put together a budget that is balanced. So we feel really confident that we're going to be able to come to you next week with a balanced budget proposal that is able to execute on the, the important work that the directors have talked to you about. So I'm not going to take you through. There are, there are some changes to these slides, but we'll take you through them next time. But you, I want to point out one number. We're at, our budget right now is at about two hundred and three million. And it's about a seven point nine one percent increase. And I just want to say that, that wow, that sounds like a big increase, but if you think about the fact that we've just come through two years of, of inflation, we're absorbing two years of inflation in this budget. We're also absorbing the cursa, the loss of the cursa funding, which is very significant. And, and so while we are showing an increase in our spending, we're able to sustain those most critical programs. And I, and I'd like to also, you know, just point out cursa for the last couple of years, it's been about seven point eight million dollars in total funding. So that's, that's a lot to absorb. The good news is if you, if you think about our tax cap, we're, we're at the tax cap. We're not proposing a levy that, that even is close to inflation. It's at the tax cap and at three point two two percent. And we've been talking a lot at Cabinet about this. And I think it's important to note that if you just look at the capital project implications on the tax cap, about point six five percent of that increase is just the increase in the local share of capital projects. So if we didn't have, if we didn't have the, the Bear Road Project, for example, this tax levy increase, we'd be about two and a half percent. So, you know, we're making investments in the future of this community and, and it's impacting our tax cap. We believe that our future capital projects, the ones that have been recently approved are going to be more tax efficient. But again, just want to leave you that this tax levy increase has been a two, three point two two percent for, for the last several meetings. I, I think we're there. That's what it's going to be. And that's what we filed with the state of New York. Again, the implications for a four hundred thousand dollar home, it's about sixty-seven dollars. We've talked about that. I'm gonna, you know, not, not take you through all the details. The budget again is balanced. I will just emphasize what Matt said, just one point about the electric vehicles. We've got a timeline that we have to work through and you can see it on the bottom of this slide that the expectation is that we are buying new only zero emissions buses by twenty twenty-seven. But there is an extension that could take us out to twenty twenty-nine. And the reality of it is it's going to take longer probably to convert our, our huge fleet and all the buses in New York State. And one of the things Matt said that's so important is we're going to manage our electric, our, our gas powered fleet a little differently than we had before because we might not be able to walk away from those buses in ten years. We might need to get twelve or fourteen or fifteen years out of a gas bus. And, and so we're, we're, we're thinking about that proactively long in advance. So here's the calendar. We've, we've, we're going to come to you next week with a budget proposal that we hope the board will embrace and be able to adopt. We've mapped out all of our community budget presentations and we're really excited about this. We're integrating some of our staff and community presentations. We're going to be doing some of them via Zoom. We're trying to give the community more opportunities than ever to come to different locations and to do them virtually to be able to see our budget presentations, all leading up to the budget hearing here on the second and the budget vote on the sixteenth. And that's pretty much the, the, the presentation for tonight. And thank you so much for your patience. Any questions for me?
Yeah, the, the community budget meetings. How are we getting the word out to the community?
So we, we, we expect this week, we're going to start to publicize that in advance of, of the board adoption. We're gonna, we're gonna have posters. We're gonna e-blast things out. And, and we're going to try to, try to make sure everybody knows that they can go to any one of these meetings. And so both at our schools and virtually.
Good. Yeah, yeah. Cause I'd like to see some large, you know, crowds.
Yes. And that's our primary motivation. As you guys know, we've done over Dan and myself and Chris and have done, you know, thirty presentations a year or more. And honestly, attendance hasn't been great. And so we're really trying to mix up the process. We're actually going to do some videos too, almost like trailers to a movie, you know, to try to get people to look at some of the highlights and hopefully attract them to come to one of our meetings in the future. Thank you.
Just a brief comment, because we go, every year we walk into the budget season and I put on my seatbelts because it just seems like we're coming to the end of a cliff. And you know, a couple of years ago, we had the coronavirus, coronavirus, some mouthful response and relief special supplemental appropriation in the ARP that, that bailed us out, as you said, that we're coming to an end on Chris's piece. You know, we've, we've had some good numbers from the state and I, we really appreciate that. I just want people to know, you know, we, we received a lot of emails the last couple of years and the board knows because they've read it in the Friday letters. In this budget, we added a fine arts director. And that was something that we've wanted to do for a couple of years. So it's just very difficult to add in a climate like this. Because when you add, you got something you think has to push out the other side and it's, it's very, very difficult. So I appreciate the ability to, to do this, that we've been able to do that, keep things intact, meet our goals, follow our strategic plan and continue the supports that we put into place specifically in response to the pandemic environment we've had that apparently, you know, I can, I, I don't even like to use the word post pandemic because I think we're just living in a reality now where we're, we're going to have to deal with that. And the, the fallout and you know, we've heard references to the students, the staff, it's just the fallout boggles my mind as to what has occurred with our students and staff and everybody else in this country in response and not response, but due to this pandemic. So the things we've put into place that we're able to maintain, I just appreciate that we're still able to do that. I get nervous now because now I got to worry, we have to worry about twenty four, twenty-five and another set of federal money coming off the table. And we're still waiting to hear, you know, the finalization of the state budget. I know most of what they're debating has to do with the bail reform pieces. But I, I feel really good about this. I, I feel good that we've been able to respond to the community outcry for a finance director and make that work in here. Because we do value that. We've always valued that and we want to, you know, expand those programs and be on par with our peers around us. So I just wanted to make that statement that we do respond to things that we do see. It's just not, it's just, it's not very easy. And I appreciate the work that you've done with the cabinet, the budget subcommittee to get us where we are right now. And we'll start all over again once we get past this one. So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And yes, we should start those earlier. That, that, those came from a recommendation from Vice President that we wanted to hear more from the directors about what's behind, you know, their programs and the budget. So I think that's a good piece. I definitely would love to start that a bit earlier. Okay, moving on, we are now at the individuals who wish to address the board and we do not, we had somebody signed up, but they are no longer. They have canceled. So I'll just restate that it is the policy of the Board of Education to welcome comments and questions from the community here at the board meeting in this portion of the meeting. And as always, you can send information via email or letter or calls to the district clerk and they'll make sure that all the board members receive that. So Board of Education Committee reports, I will start with policy.
Thank you. Thank you. Policy committee met last month and we have, we're recommending that the board re-adopt three policies at tonight's agenda. And our next meeting will be next Tuesday, April eighteenth.
Okay, thank you. Legislative, Mr. Crabtree.
Our, our next legislative meeting will be this Wednesday. And we'll be talking about the budget and also how to present it to the community as Matt was talking about. You did alleviate to the fact that there is not a budget, but Don will tell you, we will not probably receive any more extra funding, you know, foundation aids taken care of a lot and so forth. However, there are some issues out there. Charter schools, universal meals, CTE instruction salaries. So there's some other things that I haven't heard anything about. And so yes, it has a lot to do with bail reform, but I'm also looking at those topics because they do affect us. And we will speak to them on Wednesday.
I know they were successful in passing another extender today so they can work for another week. So and Superintendent Bowles.
Thank you. During the break week, again, some of our teams, they go away and they play down south. But right now our girls varsity and boys varsity lacrosse are both undefeated. Baseball is currently was down in Cocoa Beach. They had some scrimmages, but they split games one to one. There's be a track meet this coming Wednesday. If you saw the news, the North Syracuse Central School District was kind of a feature because we hosted the SU Women's Lacrosse. And I was, the estimates were about two thousand people attended. It was incredible for the area and for the district, very well received. So again, partnering with institutions and sometimes agencies goes a long way. I did have the opportunity, it was kind of a, a last minute thing to be in a, a meeting at Fulton Junior High School with Senator Schumer, talking about the problems with, with vaping and some of the things that continue to come around and expose our children to. And again, the Senator was very thankful and appreciative. So any of the opportunities we have to put To put our district in connection with local legislators, as as local and national legislators is a wonderful thing. I think because of the break, we have some nice weather coming and there's a lot of work to be done and there's going to be state testing that's happening. So. It's one of those that where we're getting ready and gearing up, as Don mentioned, we have presentations to do and a lot of work to get to May sixteenth.
Thank you. Board of Education comments?
I have a couple. I was able to attend both the, and I know you're going to be jealous, Bob. The Honor Society for both the junior high and the high school. And I know that's one of your favorite things, Bob, but. Out of town, so I went in your place. And it was actually very, very nice to see so many kids that have reached that level. And both junior high and the high school. That said, I switched to the canteen and lots going on at the canteen. There were. Ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-three visits. With seven hundred and six unduplicated youths, new kids going to the canteen. The numbers. Are really just growing so fast. There's so much that they're doing for them. There's been some retreats. A leadership retreat that twenty-six young people participated. It was a three-day, two-night retreat. There was the Saks with County Community Services. Three afternoons, there was. There's a permanent Gaga Ball pit now that was built in the backyard of the of the canteen that the kids enjoy. And therapy dog and a new art room. So there's so much going on at the canteen that's drawing more and more kids in. Which is great because of the, it's not just the activities, it's the counseling and the support that they get. That is a bonus of being there.
Okay, thank you. Others, yes?
A reminder that OCM Bosi's annual meeting is Thursday. I know Paul's going. The students in the culinary program will be. Feeding us and you will enjoy it. The last three have been snowed out, believe me, that I've been invited to. So if this one better not be snowed out on. On on Thursday. But what you will be doing. Will be voting on our school budget, but next Monday, there are two things you'll be voting on. You'll be voting on the administrative. Budget. That's the only budget that you wrote on for OCM Bosi's, not capital projects and so forth. And that information will be given to us on Thursday. So I'll make sure that our district clerk gets that information. You will also be voting for, I believe, four. Members of OCM Bosi's that. Are going to run for three-year terms. The Liverpool member is not running and. They're having difficulty choose someone over there. It's kind of interesting. But anyway, that's what you'll be voting on next Monday.
Excuse me, Mr. Farfali. I failed to mention one thing about the district calendar. So one of the things contractually, we have three snow days left and by April fifteenth. If we do not use, if we have two snow days left, which again is supposed to be eighty on Friday. That was change our calendar for this year. So there would be a day added the Friday before the Memorial Day break. And so you would be getting a revised calendar from my office for that adjustment due to the existence of more than two snow days remaining. So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, routine action. I is I could have a motion for the consideration approval of the minutes of the meeting of March twentieth, twenty-three. Motion Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion and questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, thank you. That is carried. A motion, please, for items B, C, and D. Together, motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. There are the placement and classification of stable students and by the district special ed committee for in-school, preschool and home instruction. B, C, and D are before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, thank you. That is carried. Item E, acknowledgement of the business office reports. Motion, please, from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Kruger. Those are before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, those items are carried. Thank you very much. A, resolution to increase pay rate for poll workers. Motion from Ms. Segrew, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, thank you. That is carried. B, approval or renewal lease between Slade and Free Library, North Syracuse Central School District. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Segrew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, thank you. That is carried. Acknowledgement of the twenty-three, twenty-four payroll schedule. A motion placed at before us. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Dr. Kramer. That is before us. Seeing no questions, all in favor? Post, and that is carried. Thank you. Declaration of marketable, non-marketable surplus. A motion, please, Ms. Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, that is carried. Motion for items E, F, and G. The policies, motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. These are the policies that Mr. Thorne presented to us today. Any discussion? Questions about those? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, and thank you. Those items are carried. Like to acknowledge one retirement. That would be Marsha Kaywood, School Secretary One, retiring with twenty-three years of service. From Smith Road, and I'd like to congratulate Marsha and wish her a long and healthy retirement. Instructional personnel report, A, a motion, please, placed at before us for acknowledgement. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Kruger. Any questions there? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, thank you. That is carried. And B, support staff personnel report. Motion, Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, thank you. That is carried. At this time, I'll make a motion for executive session and I'll ask for a second. The motion is to move into executive session. For the purpose of reviewing one personnel matter with no action to follow and to hear one parental appeal with action to follow. Second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, and that is carried. And if I could have a motion for adjournment, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Segrew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, we are adjourned. Thank you. Seven fifty-seven. What time do we have?